Welcome to the Tuesday, March 26, 2024 Board of Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Unfortunately, Steph McGowan won't be joining us tonight. Mother passed away suddenly a few days ago, and she's taking the evening off. Our prayers and thoughts go out to her and her family. I'm going to start with citizens input. Anybody here for citizens input?
I'm going to do the pledge, Mark.
Oh, pledge.
Yep.
Sorry. Hold on one second. Steph reminded me you could leave it.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands the nation's right to govern. Now we'll go citizens input.
So before I start, I just want to thank Paige and a couple of the Select Board members who have helped me out with a separate issue this week. So thank you for your response time and assistance across the board, and hopefully it's resolved. But I appreciate that. I'm going to time myself and try to keep it to roughly the three-minute timeframe, and I am going to read this just to be on the safe side as well, just so you're aware. Couple of items to discuss.
Your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Randall Lyons, 59 Carroll Drive, Foxborough. Couple of items to discuss this evening, but my main reason for being here today is to follow up on an email inquiry, which quickly escalated into a complaint related to the Foxborough Recreation Board from Friday, March 1st, and my follow-up outline complaint from March 4th, before the Recreation Board meeting of March 11th was conveniently canceled. I want to stress, this is a complaint against the Recreation Board and in support of Renee and the Recreation Department. I know you were not able to comment back on this tonight, but to the best of my knowledge, no one from the Recreation Board has resigned to date over this board violation, but maybe that will happen on or before their board meeting on April 8th. This board decision/violation was made after being advised by the Director of the Recreation Department that their decision was not a good idea and a slap in the face to her. The lack of support from this board for Renee is disturbing and a problem that needs to change. On the opposite side of putting your political and personal views ahead of the town, I wanted to give a shout-out to the Foxborough High School Logo Emblem Committee. As most of you are aware, this committee was brought together in an effort to create a more inclusive and appropriate logo for the future of the town and the high school. There are 16 members on this committee. It is being led, to the best of my knowledge, by Dr. James Donovan, the principal of the high school. Dr. Donovan is the only one from this committee that I know. However, I want to recognize the work being done in an effort to move the town forward with their proposal for new logo options. I understand there are several members of this committee that have a favorable opinions of the retired logo, and I respect their decision to join this committee in order to put the town and schools ahead of their own opinions. I have seen a couple of the logo designs to date, which look great. The cutoff date to submit your logo design is Friday, so if you are interested, take a look at the high school page for design criteria. Lastly, currently, the town is facing some challenges, but I am confident that Foxborough will come together to make decisions that are the best for the future of the town and be open to necessary changes to move forward. We are approaching a school committee election that is extremely important as the town faces challenges over the next few years with school funding related to state budget issues. The schools represent close to 50% of the town's budget, and the time is now for the silent majority of the town to speak up and recognize how important it is to elect the best and most qualified individuals for school committee. I would ask everyone, and especially taxpayers, to do some due diligence over the next six weeks and search up the following three topics: tax overrides, staff and teacher layoffs, and Chapter 70 funding. These are issues that districts across the state are currently facing and will be here in Foxborough over the next couple of years. Our school system, led by the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Curriculum Director, principals, teachers, and staff, deserve the best support possible to continue to achieve success and maintain a consistent ranking in the top 25% of school districts within the state. Please remember this when you go to vote in May. Move the town forward and fight for the kids, not against them. Be proactive in supporting additional state funding for Foxborough schools in the future, as it will only help the taxpayers, the town, and, most importantly, the students in the future. So I'm done, but again, my understanding is that you can't comment on the Recreation Board complaint tonight, so I would ask this item be added to the agenda on your April 9th meeting. I am hopeful that some of the Recreation Board members will be resigning before that happens, but if not, I believe as the Oversight Committee for the Recreation Board that a decision should be made one way or another by your committee. I will plan to send you all the information that I have gathered regarding that complaint: emails, pictures, altered pictures, and more, related to what I believe was a violation of board policy and a violation and misuse of taxpayer funds, should result in removal of board members. The time is now for the change on this board. I would rather not take this step, so I would ask the Recreation Board to do the right thing and make the appropriate resignations before April 9th. Thank you very much for your time.
And anything you send, send to Katie, and she'll disperse it to us.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else with citizens input? I thought you were raising your hand.
Good.
No? Good. All right. Oh, the use of public way for Memorial Day Parade. Here you go.
Hello, everyone. I am Lauren Shirtliff. I am the Acting VSO for our Foxborough Veteran Services. I'm seeking permission for road closure on Memorial Day, which is Monday, May 27.
Into the microphone, sorry, just a little bit more from the audience.
I apologize. So road closure request for Memorial Day, May 27th, beginning at 9:30 a.m. At that point, we will have parade participants meeting up in the back lot of the Church of Emmanuel. At 10:00 a.m., the parade will proceed through the parking lot of the church and take a right onto Central Street, where it will continue counterclockwise around the common to where the ceremony will begin on the common that has already been approved, the use of the common. Let's see. We have our keynote speaker picked already. His name is Doug Smith, who is a retired airborne combat veteran. He is also a member of our VSAT committee and a member of the VFW. That will be followed by the roll call, the laying of the Memorial Day wreaths, comments, salute taps as well. And it's followed with a lunch at the VFW after the ceremony. I've requested the road closure remain until 12:00 p.m. to give time to dismantle from the ceremony and reopen the roads.
Any questions from the board? We've done this for decades. This is great. You did wonderful, and Mark didn't even have to say anything.
Love that.
Yeah, don't you? Yeah.
Good to sit here and smile.
All right. Great. So with that motion to approve the use of public way application for the town's Memorial Day Parade on May 27, 2024, to assemble in the back parking lot of the Church of Emmanuel on Central Street, parade to proceed right onto Central Street, to South Street, and around the common.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
All right. The ballot language finalization. So the ballot was, and warrants were finalized by us a couple of weeks ago, and we, any questions from the board? It is potentially going to be two days. Normally, it's two Mondays in a row. Unfortunately, we couldn't do the second Monday, so it's going to be Monday, Tuesday. We talked about the warrants, how best to split them up, especially with the thought of it being a second day, so that we gave it a lot of thought on how they come in order, and anybody have any thoughts of what we came up with?
We're going to talk about the warrant in another agenda item.
Right. That's a little.
Little, yeah. So this is about the ballot question, so, and we have Bob here in case you have any questions.
Yeah, and I don't remember seeing, like, if we've done this, it's been a while, so I wouldn't mind hearing from Bob personally, just if you can kind of talk us through it, Bob is the expert on this.
So these ballot questions are debt exclusions, so it requires a vote at town election, and then a separate vote for the funding.
Mr. Beck is asking if you can just go closer to the microphone as well. Sorry. Thanks.
Sure. Sorry.
And who are you?
So it requires the two votes, one through the ballot and then the funding vote at town meeting. So, and you have to have both for it to be operational. These questions are a little different, and I know that Bond Counsel has reviewed the language, as has Pat Costello, and Pat actually picked up a little piece on the church one, so, because of the sale of real estate and stuff like that. So it was nice that he had a chance to review that. So we've already started getting the ballot ready, and I'm just waiting for the approval on the ballot questions. We'll plug those in, because I want to have all of that done by the end of the week. The withdrawal period for candidates is August 3rd, which is next Wednesday, I mean, April 3rd, which is next Wednesday, and we want to be able to have the ballots printed starting on April 4th. So we're already ready to go, just waiting to place these three ballot questions in.
Yeah, I'm reading this here, and it says 76 Main Street Locker Room Expansion?
Yeah, that's the.
Two on that. When you open it up, there's two.
Okay.
Locker Room is the police station.
Yeah.
Right. I know that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what that is.
And when you open it up, it goes through both? So there's two ballot questions, two motions, two articles on there.
But typically, you know, the town has not done an actual debt exclusion or an override. We've done debt exclusion before, and we haven't done one in quite some time. In fact, I don't think we've done one in my term here as the clerk, so I don't recall one anyways.
Yeah, so we haven't done this ballot question.
We've done ballot questions.
Okay, so have we reviewed them like this?
Very few since I've been town clerk, so, you know, on the town ballot, there's been plenty of ballot questions on the state elections and stuff like that, but, you know, nothing that we had control over.
Yep. That's, I wasn't as familiar with the process, so let me walk us through it.
And does the Attorney General have to go through it? Anyone from the state?
Well, it's the Department of Revenue, and so the language has to be pretty specific, and the statute tells you how you can ask the question. And in doing a little research today on it, I find it interesting that for the override questions, you can't have a summary on the ballot, where you would see that on the state elections, those initiative petition questions, they have a summary, but you're not allowed to do that for the override question, so.
It's just going to be the straight question.
Straight question, and it has to be written a certain way, and so that's why Bond Counsel was involved, and Pat, just so that the language is specific, so.
And there's going to be multiple opportunities, that you're going to be going out and speaking on the ballot questions, and.
Yes.
So we're going to hopefully try to get that information out to everybody through, you're doing vignettes on cable access. Why don't you tell us what, how you're going to try to get that information on?
Sure. Well, we do have Maura Buckley on staff now, which has been great. She's been here almost two weeks, and she's basically doing all communications, so it's been great. And you won't see much yet, but she's working really hard. And yes, she's already scheduled several of the vignettes we're doing. I think next Tuesday or Thursday, I'm going to DPW, then we just, this afternoon, scheduled Public Safety, and I don't know if we've gotten into the community, we did get in the community center, okay, that was, we were dicey getting into that. So we're going to try to do some videos from those facilities with the summary with the subject matter experts there, kind of. I'm turning into a director and a producer now, because now I have, like, shot, you know, over here, and summary in the background voice here. I don't know if it's going to come out like that, but that's my vision. So I'm sure Mike Weber loves the idea of me telling him how to run his shots, but. So yeah, we are doing that, and we'll also be working with the Foxborough Reporter, with social media. We're just going to try everything we can to get the word out.
And those are going to run continuously on cable access.
Yeah, people will be sick of us. And that's why we're doing a bunch of little ones, so that, like, it's not like you have to sit for an hour and a half show. You can catch 15 minutes here. You might only see five minutes that night, but then you go back to, you know, go to bed the next night, and you can catch the next five minutes, that kind of thing, so. Seen it work in other towns. We're going to give it a shot.
Good.
And just for your information, that you're not allowed to hand things out at the election. If they want to do any kind of campaigning, would have to be outside the 150-foot mark where candidates can stand, so you could have people with signs or whatever, but nothing could be handed out at the polls and that kind of stuff, so.
So where the candidates are along that parking lot to the right.
Correct.
But not a desk as you walk in?
Nothing placed inside the voting area.
And when will the dollar amounts be filled in on those? I know it's typical to see them blank.
With the motions.
With the motions, okay.
Yeah, so that's not on the language.
That's not, okay, so that's, okay. We don't need to worry about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Bob, we're talking about debt exclusions here.
Yes.
Can you take a second on exclusion versus override?
Yeah, so what happens is an override is in addition to the tax dollars, and it's permanent.
Permanent.
That exclusion is just for the term of, you know, 10 or 20 years, whatever the bond is.
Thank you.
Thanks for explaining. And Maura put together a great little synopsis of that, and it'll be up on the web to kind of give the difference between an override, regular override versus a debt exclusion. So we're trying to, I know Foxborough doesn't do these very often, so it's very important. And I just say, as a Franklin resident, you should all be very happy where you are, because Franklin, we're getting ready to vote in June on a $10 million operational override, not a debt exclusion, an actual permanent increase to the tax rate. So things are tight in a lot of towns. Foxborough is actually in very good position compared to many other communities, so feel good about that.
Okay, and coming full circle, depending on what happens there, again, back to the warrants, again, that might change the warrant on the nights.
Right. If it doesn't pass election, it wouldn't go to, it would be tabled at town meeting.
Obviously, yeah. I hadn't thought of it though.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have to vote on anything.
No, we didn't make a motion.
We're going to approve the final ballot language for the annual town meeting.
If they have a majority vote on the language, and Katie will let me know in the morning, and then we'll plug it in.
Okay. So motion to approve the final ballot language for annual town meeting as presented.
Should we say as presented tomorrow?
No, they're here. They're in our.
It's, oh, I thought Bob said they were going to be approved tomorrow.
Well, Katie's going to let him know tomorrow that it's all set.
Oh, I looked at it backwards. I apologize. Sorry. Okay.
And town councils wait in, Bob's waiting.
For us to approve it.
Sounds like everyone's waiting.
Bond Council, everybody's reviewed it.
I thought it was the other way around. Okay.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. You name this. All right. Matt Brennan, Public Health. Try to have a department in once a month and give us an update on what's going on in their departments, and Matt's lucky enough to come in front of us today, Health Department.
All right. How are you?
Good.
I'll get the PowerPoint up. Thank you. Do you have a remote or? So I'm Matthew Brennan, Director of Public Health for the town. You know, who we are and what we do. I mean, our mission is right here. We're charged with improving the quality of life within the town of Foxborough by promoting healthy behavior, protecting the environment, preventing disease, and making the town a healthy place to live, work, and play. That's really what we do. You know, I like our mission statement, it does fit us well. Who we are, it's myself.
Point to the back.
Mr. Beck.
Point at Mr. Beck. There you go.
Yep.
Maybe.
Who we are, right now, we have three and a half full-time employees. Diane, our administrator, Megan, who's a new inspector, who we are training, and we have a part-time sanitarian, Kevin Duquette, as well as myself. And then we have two full-time grant employees totally through Department of Public Health Grant Funds, and hopefully soon adding another one. We have a grant food inspector, Paul, housing inspector, Cliff, and, you know, for the grant, for the future position, we don't have a job description yet, but hopefully sometime in the future, we'll have another worker within the department. Next slide, please. Our accomplishments for 2023. We performed 1,145 inspections, permitted 725 different local establishments. You know, with the inspections, most of them were food. We did about 452 food inspections and almost 300 septic systems and 100 hotel rooms, responded to 81 complaints. So, you know, we were out there in the community trying to make it a better place. Also, we partnered with Mark and the Council on Aging to put a Sharps Collection kiosk in the town, permanent, full-time. Our previous, previously, we had quarterly events, which weren't as intended, weren't, didn't have great staffing and, you know, not great turnout. This has been a, you know, the community has really received this new Sharps Collection container and liked it, being at the Council on Aging building, so we've been able to do that for the community as well. Also, during 2023, we revised all our Board of Health regulations. We went through every single one of them. We reached out to you guys. We received your comments. We looked at those comments. We actually, almost every single comment we received led to a revision. Not all of them, but a lot of them did. So, you know, we listened to the community, got the feedback, you know, tried to do what's right, and we'll move forward with promulgating those regulations on April 8th. So it's coming up quick. Next slide. Also, one thing that we've been trying to do is educate the community, especially one of the things I thought we could do better since being here is educating the community about hazardous waste sites in the town. This year, we had two University of Connecticut Brownfield Technical Assistance for Brownfield program do a few presentations at Board of Health meetings. One was for 131 Moore Street, which we've been talking about, and a basic site overview, because there's actually seven parcels of land in that. And the other is Porter's Corner, which is between Susa Ave, Barrows Lane, and Coke Acid Street. So there's a parcel there that's owned by Foxborough Solar Partners that is known to be contaminated, that they did a presentation on as well. Besides that, we've been doing some health education. We offered a free mental health first aid training, which teaches people how to recognize signs of mental health or substance use in adults, and provide them help and guide towards care if necessary. We actually have a youth mental health first aid class coming up May 3rd at the Boydin Library, if anyone is interested, and a lot of our camp counselors and people in the community are taking that. We still have a few spots left, but, you know, we're trying to do some health education when we're allowed, and we have the funds for it. We're also promoting good health. We participated in Founder's Day. You know, we got great feedback from the community, gave some physical fitness promotions to the kids. We've worked with the state to get free COVID tests. We've distributed them at the library here at Town Hall, and just some well-timed promotion. You know, in August and September, during high mosquito season, we've been giving out bug spray or sunscreen in the summer to really, you know, timely, so people think about their health more. Next slide. Now, for moving into 2024, you know, like I said previously, we have $175,000 for basically a new position within the town. This graph that I'm showing you here right now, this is basically from the Department of Public Health. They did a capacity assessment on our region, and this basically says how we are doing as, you know, a region for the Bristol Norfolk Public Health Partners, which is Mansfield, Norton, Easton, Plainville, and Sharon, as well as ourself. The state averages, health departments are meeting 78% of the performance standards that the state would like them to hit. Right now, we're above that average at 82%, but there's still room for improvement, and that is what the $175,000 from the state is meant for. So we'll be looking at, with those funds, to boost these standards that we're meeting right now, hopefully to, you know, to meet the 100%.
Can you give us some examples of what those are, those standards are, like, just one of them, like, that we're not meeting?
Yeah, so there's, there's a few. It's really built, Foxborough's been built out in, you know, the way, one thing, you know, an easy example I can give you is Mass. Journal Law says we should be doing burial certificates. You know, the clerk's office does the death certificate, but we should be doing the burials, and that's always been a clerk function here. So that is one thing. And, and there's, there's others, and it's just because the town has evolved and it was built out that way, but it might not be to what the state is requiring, yeah.
So it's not that we're not inspecting restaurants, or we're not, it's nothing like that, it's more administrative or that, those types of tasks?
Yeah, and, and it's regional, too. It's not just us. So even though we might be doing it, someone else may not be doing it the total, you know, the way, so there's a little bit of gray on what everyone else is doing, because it is, it's looked at upon as a region.
Matt, under Disease Control and Prevention, are you doing any kind of health screening, pressure screening, or stuff like that?
So that, I mean, Tom Kenvin is our public health nurse, and that's run through the fire department, and, you know, that's one thing that I can't say that I have control over, so, you know, but Tom would, he is absolutely doing that. And, you know, we'll be doing that more through our department as well, our health screenings, but, you know, Narcan and some other things we have upcoming. But yeah, that's, that's something we'd like to, you know, improve on, and that's just, you know, this is the way Foxborough's been built out, and, which is fine, but just trying to meet the state standard. Next slide. Goals, I touched on it briefly, but April 8th, we'll be promulgating the new regulation, so if anyone is interested, or if you have feedback, like to attend the Board of Health meeting, feel free. Also opioid settlement funds. So we have an opioid survey out now. We're soliciting community feedback, and what we'd like to do is get the community's feedback on how you'd like these funds spent, and we'd like to reach the stakeholders within the area and people with a lived experience of dealing with opioids. Next slide, please. And, you know, the first question people ask is, hey, how much are we getting? What can we spend it for? This is just a breakdown. It's $975,000, but unfortunately, the distributor payments are, which is the bulk of it, is over 18 years. So this is, some are five, some are 10, some are 18, so, you know, it averages about $54,000 a year. It's not, you know, it's not a great deal to support, like, a big program, but, you know, it is money, and it can be very helpful for the community. And these are some of the uses that it could be used for, such as opioid treatment, supportive individuals, harm reduction, connections to care, and other things. So, you know, right now, we're working with the Rotary Club and the Safe Coalition to have Narcan training, because as I watch these surveys come in, that is something that the community has been asking for and would like to see more of in the town, so we'll be trying to provide that. Next slide. And of course, Summit Castings in 131 Moore Street. Yukon Tab, we received a Yukon Tab grant to really create a website dedicated to Summit Castings and other Brownfield success stories that we can give to the public, which we plan to present on April 26, sorry, April 22nd, at the Board of Health meeting. You know, they, and if you're watching from home, or, and you're unfamiliar with, you know, why we're concerned about this property, next slide, please. You know, the current state of the property, it's not in good condition, you know, roof is failing, floors are buckling. You know, roof is failing, floors are buckling. There's actually a dam that runs underneath it, which is failing. And it's a burnt-out shell of itself. Next slide. So, I mean, even, not to mention, there's hazardous waste contamination there. And then if you do a little digging, you know, to try to do some enforcement, you know, here's the town's property viewer and says, hey, this is owned by Moore Street Realty Corp. And you look up Moore Street Realty Corp. at the, at Corporations Database, and it's owned by Francis Thibault. Next slide, please. You do a little bit more digging, and here it is. From the probate court, it was given to the town, to the town of Foxborough. All my interest in the real estate and buildings located at 131 Moore Street. Town never really accepted it, but it was given to the town. You know, so we have really the most interest in this property. It's been given to us. We, tax title?
What's the date, Matt? Or a general, I don't care what day it is, just how many years ago?
After 2014, 2016.
Okay, so relatively recently.
Something like that.
Yeah.
The company went defunct in 2014. I could get the date on this. I'm not exactly sure.
No, it's generally.
Yeah. You know, the, the property is in tax title. It owes back taxes. It's been given to us. We've condemned it. We've boarded it up. We've secured it. Unfortunately, we have the most interest in it right now. So, it is a concern for the, for the community because there's really no one that's going to do anything but the town. Because, you know, it's, no one's out there and no one wants a contaminated property. So, it's going to be something that the town's going to have to deal with for a long time to come.
It was listed for sale, though, recently and then pulled off the market.
That's a different property.
A different one, okay.
Because it's seven different parcels there.
The photo looks like the one that you showed that's on.
Yeah. It's a, that, so there's, I think it was Duke's Place, which we refer to as Duke's Place. That's the property that was listed.
But they're separate properties?
Correct. They're all 131.
Okay.
But there are seven different parcels within that address. It's very confusing. Yeah. But it was all once the Mansfield Bleachery.
Okay.
Next slide, please. Now, this is my favorite slide. You know, what are we doing to support you and the, the support of the town manager's goal? As you can see here, protect and enhance the financial health of the town. So, Foxborough residents pay $14.70 for, for services for the health department. But we're municipality A, yet they're receiving $43.83 worth of services. So, you know, with what we've been able to do with the grant, what we've been able to provide to the community, it's much more. We're, you know, the town of Foxborough is paying in line with most of our surrounding communities. You know, yet this department is giving out a lot more resources than, than most others. So, I love that slide just because it shows how much, you know, that we're trying to do and, and give back. So, next slide. You know, also, we've had other grants. We had the Community Health Network Alliance for the Mental Health First Aid. We've applied for the EPA Brownfield Grant, but unfortunately, until we have title of the property, it won't be able to go through. We've taken advantage of state resources when we can, like the COVID test kits and, and in order to provide them to the community. And we've worked with the community on updating our fee schedule, so they're in line with, you know, the community's needs. Next slide. And we've also promoted modern and professional town operations, like supporting your review of licensing procedures and having dialogue before, you know, our even, the regulations are being promulgated before the public hearing. We didn't want it to be, you know, gotcha, like, hey, we're forcing you to do this. We wanted people's input before that even, you know, the hearing was put out there. So, we've reached out to the community, got their feedback and had great conversations. So, and next slide. And that's it. And here's a few of our pictures from, you know, inspecting and Founder's Day from this year. And that's where I'll end. And if you have any questions for me, that'd be great.
Quick question. You have two grant-supported positions?
So, we have two grant-supported positions right now. And we'll, so they, they're three-year grants, but they're reoccurring. We expect to have them for at least another 10 years, but it's again, it's, it's up to state budget funding. But it'll soon be, we have the money for a third position. But we just have the, all the towns have to agree upon a job description. And once we agree on the job description, then we'll get it out there and get it posted.
Any other questions?
Do you, sorry. I was just asking, I thought it was great. I understand why you don't televise all your meetings, so I'm not going to go there. But I think it was great that one with, that you did televise with the regulations to get that out there. Do you intend to televise that next one, just for people that are following along when you're making the rules final? Or is there not that many changes that you hadn't intended to?
I haven't thought that.
Okay.
I, I try to, anytime that there's an educational component or I think that people, I want to televise those. Some of the other ones, I feel like it's a little bit sensitive and the board does, too.
Yep.
But I have, yeah, the next one, I believe that's the only thing on our agenda, so I wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Doing it. I can ask Foxborough Cable Access for that.
I think it's great for some of those educational ones to, you know,
Absolutely.
to be able, if you're not able to make it, to go back. I know I've gone back and watched them, and the board's been really great and supportive in seeking feedback and implementing feedback that's received as well, too. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just wanted to give Matt a shout out as the department head that identified the opportunity around the licensing authority and the documentation regarding roles and responsibilities and licensing requirements. I think we were just having a conversation. I said, what, what, what can we do differently? What can we do better? And he said, well, there is this one thing. I mean, you're, you're working to, to drive us forward, you know, consistently based on this, but I just wanted to add that that was a, a unique thing that, you know, was just an idea and it made a lot of sense. And so, we've made progress around the documentation and it's a work in progress. But appreciate the, just a little extra that you, value that you drove there.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And that's one thing, you know, it's when you come here as a department head or you want to be able to know, you know, what your job is and relatively easily and find the information quickly and be able to get it done. That's the same thing I'm doing with the Board of Health Regulations, trying to put them in one place, somewhere easy for people to get to and say, you know, here, here's where it is. This is what you need and, and go from there. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great presentation.
Thanks, Matt. I just have to tell you all that April 9th is when the planning, Land Use Department's supposed to come in for their departmental presentation, but I made the executive decision to say no to that only because the planning depart, the Land Use Department's at half-staff these days and like, I don't have time to do a presentation with you guys on the Land Use Department. So, I figured you kind of know.
Right before town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm just, we're skipping, yeah, we're skipping that night. So, we'll be back next year. When we get a planner, we'll get, let them get their feet wet and then go from there. But that's why I did cut off April 9th. Y'all see me enough. We're good.
All right, next up on the agenda is the capital improvement requests.
Yes, so this is sort of, not a housekeeping item, but it was, it wasn't on, when we were talking about CIP last time, this was left off the agenda, so we added it on to make sure we cross that T. If you recall, this was from a year ago. There was supposed to be a fall town meeting at which these capital, these deferred capital improvements were going to be voted. But if you recall, we weren't able to hold a town meeting that dealt with any financial matters because it was too close to setting the tax rate. So, these have sort of rolled over into our May town meeting this year. So, they're actually FY '24. They've been, you know, and I think Marie's on if we need her, but I don't think we do. But these are all things that have been discussed previously and reviewed, and CIP has met and approved them, and now it would be up to the Select Board to review and approve.
And last meeting, we voted on '25.
Correct.
This is the housekeeping for '24.
For '24. And again, just as, just to reiterate, so everybody knows, this is more housekeeping from the previous year. Because of timing, we couldn't get it on the special town meeting. So, it is 2024, but we've already discussed it and everybody's discussed it.
Yeah, the money's already kind of earmarked.
Right.
You know, it's from last year, so.
Any questions?
I'm the board rep on the capital committee and, you know, everything was really appropriate and well-supported.
Thank you.
Right, so Dennis, it's, it says free cash here. So, is that a million dollars that's part of 2024 free cash? Or is it incremental 2025 free cash?
2024.
Okay.
Before the free cash discussions.
All right, so Matt, are we ready for a motion?
Sure.
So, motion to approve the fiscal year '24 capital improvement requests.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Parking review. So, we got two, two things up on the agenda for that. Increasing the fees for parking up at the stadium and the new parking lot at 1517 Market Street. So, we'll start with the stadium.
Sure. So, that question just came up. I think someone on staff had asked about that, like, when was the last time that was done? You know, there's a lot of work that goes in to the satellite lots. And I know Katie has mentioned that Walpole, they also have satellite lots, and they try to remain consistent with Foxborough. So, they've been checking with us, and I know they're interested in raising rates, but they want to be with Foxborough. So, it was a matter of, we wanted, Doc and I discussed it, and we wanted to at least daylight the issue. I don't know, you know, what you're going to do if you're going to make a decision. Right now, it's $7 per space out on Route 1, serving the stadium. And the proposal, at least being bandied about, although nothing official, was to maybe consider, I think, Doc, you had mentioned, maybe $10 a space. So, there's a discussion. Katie, I don't know, are you able to, Katie manages this whole program. Are you able to describe, it seems to be kind of a cumbersome process for you. Is it, can you walk the board through of what you do? Because the state's involved, Walpole's involved, several touch points.
So, from the town, we take every spot for every lot, and I basically make an invoice for them to pay the town of Foxborough. And then, so that process happens in May of every year. So, those lots run from July 1st to June 30th. On the state side, which I just heard from them a couple of weeks ago, I am in contact with the, the me of Walpole, and the state asks us for the number of spots for that last fiscal year. We then send them that information. They do a bunch of math, which is basically the $400,000 bond, which those satellite lot holders are paying for the expansion of Route 1. They give me a per-spot fee that they owe to the state. Then I put together invoices for the state on their behalf and sent, collect all the checks from each satellite lot and then mail those into the state before June 1st. So, yeah, it's definitely a lot of work. And Walpole had reached out a couple of months ago and said if we were going to be thinking about it. I know, you know, fees were something that you guys all wanted to, you know, just make sure we were on top of. I don't think these have been updated, the $7 per spot in the last 15 years. Walpole's lots on Route 1 are December, so they're not really having conversations until like the summertime for, for their lots, but they want to, they have voice, so they want to remain consistent with Foxborough. And they also felt that it was time to maybe do a increase.
And you know what the average per-spot charge is for these lots?
I do not.
About 50 bucks?
I do think it's between like 40 and 60.
And this fee is annually, not per event?
Yes, annually, collected once. So, if there's playoff games, I know in the past, you know, when the Patriots were really good, they were not collecting more monies when there were more playoff games or more concerts. And then same thing for, if there's only, when COVID happened, every, the fee remained the same. There wasn't a prorated amount or a discount.
And, I mean, I, I think, you know, compared to what the fees were 15, 20 years ago, I, I don't think $3, $3 addition is a big, big ask compared to, you know, maybe 30, 30, 15 years ago up to 50 now per lot. And it's a one-time deal. It's once for the number of spaces and then move on.
Each year, yeah.
Each year, sorry, yeah, each year.
So, are the lot owners paying the state, too? Or is this, so they're paying the state, we're handling like the invoicing, and then the town is getting this amount that we're talking about now? Do you have any idea what this amount is roughly last time for the state?
About $22, some change.
And did we hear from any lot owners with concerns with this on the agenda? Should we let it sit? Have we, have we heard from anyone? Anyone reach out?
I, I did speak to one lot owner, and he didn't think it was a big deal. And I spoke to another one, and he did think it was a big deal.
Okay.
How many spots do you think each of those lot owners have? I mean, is it incremental three bucks a year per spot for them? So, let's say they have 400, 400 spots? I don't know.
20-something thousand?
20,000 spots, okay. Okay.
For one of them.
One of them, and as small as probably 20.
20.
Yeah, but the, yeah, but the few, the two that I've talked to is probably, I don't even remember now. The other, the smaller one is probably, I don't know, between 500 and 1,000 spaces, is guessing. And then the larger, obviously, the larger user is going to have a, more of a problem with.
So, an incremental 60,000 for that top-end lot user per year?
And when's the last time we adjusted this?
15 years.
Over 15?
Long time, okay.
Long time.
Long time. I mean, I think an adjustment is definitely warranted. I don't think there's a lot of benchmarks to, to use, really, because there's no other, I'm trying to rack my brain right now. I can't even think about who we would go out and get rates from. So, I think it's kind of what, what feels right as a.
What recourse would a lot owner, I mean, what if we said 20 bucks a spot? I mean, what does that mean? Can we do whatever we want? Can we keep it the same? Can we go 40 bucks? I mean, what's the?
Well, by general rule, you don't, you never want a fee to be an overcharge. You're not supposed to make profit on fees. So, you need to, that's why I wanted Katie to explain sort of the amount of touch points and the amount of work because you certainly would want to justify any fee you charge, you know, they get in-kind services, so.
Okay, that, so now we're getting, so what is the cost to the town for providing whatever service we provide?
Right.
I don't know, lights, what is?
Well, public safety.
Katie's time.
Katie's time, you got the building inspector making sure that.
Yeah, so it's.
You got fire going out there to inspect the lots, please.
Probably with porta-potties.
Porta-potties.
So, it's $7?
It's quite an operation out there.
Food's a big one, yeah, in the parking lots.
At $7, what's the, what's the total? You know, I don't know how many spots it is, but what is the total number per year? That would be useful. And then some kind of understanding of what that cost to the town is. And then you can try to balance it out, right? So, we're, we're not trying to be, it's not, we're not looking for a profit driver here, trying to cover the cost of the town. So, understanding what that is would be really helpful. It's hard to say what the right number is.
And again, I don't know how we're going to, I mean, I can take my best stab at it, but it's going to be a challenge. Because like, what are we evaluating? I mean, when you talk about the costs, like how to offset, you know, all the public safety costs and all that. I mean, when you think of the events.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's hard to quantify.
Any methodology, I mean, Marie, Marie does this stuff, I'm sure, in her sleep, where she's like allocating a percentage of this and that. And, you know, I, I don't want to put it on Marie, but I trust her to come up with a methodology that is. And it, you know, I'm not talking about consultant level. I'm thinking about back in the envelope.
Right, so if we're questioned, we.
And the state must have something because they're coming up with a dollar a month. But there's a 22 a space, so, you know.
That was classic.
Well, that's the bond amount, the 400,000 is the bond amount. So, they just take the number of spots divided by that.
Okay. And there is some fundamental sort of questions around that because I believe, and again, I'm speaking a little out of school here and a lot of it is hearsay, but my understanding is this bond was done, you know, over 20 years ago, and some people thought there was an end date, you know, a 20-year end date. And in speaking with Paul Feeney, there doesn't seem to be an end, like, it just seems to, so like, it's very interesting, like, when does the state stop collecting? We believe never at this rate. So, that's the interesting thing. So, they, you know, they might have a bit more of a upset over the $22 than they do the $7 or $10, but, you know, they might not be able to get to the state. They can certainly protest here. So, it, you know, that might not, I don't know whether that's fair or not fair. I don't know the arrangements back then. But I've heard anecdotally that, you know, this bond seems to go on forever, and we don't know when, when it will ever end.
So, we, we could table it, you know, this was something we just wanted to bring up, get, get us thinking about it. We could do a little bit more research. But it's hard to quantify, you know, the.
For sure.
Bicycle cops going through parking lots.
And I would try to focus on. And I would try to focus on incremental costs. So, if bicycle cops are already driving through there and it's no incremental cost to the town, then we could leave that potentially out. Just thinking about the incremental cost of having those lots there, just as an approach or a data.
Any other thoughts, though? We'll put it on hold for two weeks.
Yeah, it's just a question of when would we have to have this done? Because it's getting close to.
Yeah, when do you need, Katie?
April. Any date in April, because I would like to send them out May 1st.
So, yeah, so April 9th. We'll put it on, back on the agenda, April 9th. We'll get some background information as much as we can. And, yeah, and I just threw out 10 to make it a nice round number.
Sounds great.
It could be, it could be 970, it could be, you know, 1120, but.
We don't want to even get that precise, but if it's nine or 12 or, you know. So, yeah, you guys get it.
All right, great. And the other thing we just wanted to start a discussion on is, you know, the parking lot on Market Street. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to take a look at it. But it's a nice little spot, right near everything. And we just want to see if we could maybe come up with some rules and regulations about public parking. Again, just to get started on this thought, maybe any thoughts from the board? You know, we certainly don't want those spots taken up by, you know, commercial vehicles and, you know, overnight, except for snow emergencies or anything like that. It's more than 10.
14.
14, okay.
And they did a great job.
We do have a couple neighbors, I see that the Shays are here and Judy came in, Mark. So, we have some stakeholders that live near this parking lot or work near this parking lot. So, just to give you some background, so that's to your point, Doc. I was concerned that to make sure that we kind of start off with the rules of the road. You have a chance to think about it. Not too often you get a new municipal parking lot. We have one, it's great. You know, today I heard concerns about that some residents that live nearby, you know, in the new apartments, they could end up parking there all the time overnight. So, that's a valid concern. You know, we want to make sure this lot remains for sort of economic development as opposed to becoming, you know, a second parking lot for a second car in one of these apartments. Yeah, driveway. So, but it's a balancing act, because we don't want to be, you know, too heavy-handed. But we want to sort of set this framework. So, I have a draft in here, I would already change it just because this draft, you know, did say they could park overnight. Maybe we don't even allow park, maybe you close the lot from like midnight to 6:00 or something. I don't, I don't really know all the answers, but I figured we'd start the dialogue.
Yeah, well, let's hear, do you guys, were you here to just hear what we had to say? Or do you have any opinions too?
I guess I can cheer.
Yeah, please.
You gotta come up.
Come on up, and that's what this is really all about, just to get the ball rolling.
Hi, I'm Linda Shay, I live at 20 Market Street, so I'm across the street. There hasn't really been, as of right now, a problem with overnight parking. But, you know, the apartment building isn't completed yet, so I don't know, you know, how that will impact it. People do use it during the day and certainly people for the Orpheum and for Station 1 park there. So, I think, you know, it is well-used. The one concern we have, I mean, we're assuming that it's not finished yet, because it doesn't look so great.
It hasn't been turned over to us, yeah.
Right, okay. I know the planning board did have a decision. But, I mean, we are hoping to see a little landscaping and make it look nicer, because it doesn't really look very nice right now. I would agree, we should consider no overnight parking, because I think that could be a problem. You know, if the space is unavailable, then it kind of defeats the whole purpose of why we put the parking lot there. But I think it is well-used by the businesses in the area.
Great, that's super, thank you. Anybody else want to come up in thoughts?
Mark Duffy from Judy's Flowers, ERS Management, 34 School Street. We're a director butler to the parking lot. Also, we just wanted to thank our town manager for making sure that the lot was paved before the project was finished. It's been a tremendous alleviation for us for our parking issues. Our tenants use it, our tenants, customers and clients use it, and our employees can use it as well during the day. No overnight parking, I think, is great. I wouldn't do it, you know, overnight parking would definitely be a no. And I think commercial parking as well, just to make it for town public use only. But it's been very successful thus far, so we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much.
And I don't want to speak for Jim DeVellis, but he did contact me this afternoon. I don't know if anyone else spoke to him. He was planning on coming, had something work-related that got in the way, but had similar concerns. Wants it to be for the businesses, you know, was concerned about the theater. Basically, doesn't want it to turn into like a second, a parking spot for a second car. You know, and as I reflected on it throughout the afternoon, our other lots also don't have overnight parking on Central, the Central Street or Veterans Lot, as well as the Schneider Lot, except for during snow emergencies. So, you know, while we're undergoing this big change uptown, I think it may be good to keep it all consistent, just so people who park uptown understand that the municipal lots are for the businesses and the tenants and, you know, so that people can get up there easily and, you know, not so that cars are parked there, you know, overnight. So, as long as the police feel like they can monitor that appropriately, I would like to maybe let this one sit, just in case we hear any feedback from other neighbors or businesses. But, you know, my guts leaning more towards the no overnight parking as well. It's something we can always revisit on the Veterans Lot and this one, just as we go. But it's really for use for everyone, want to make sure everyone's getting kind of their fair share at access to the lot.
Yeah, and if you think back to, you know, part of when Station 1 was first opened up and we were thinking parking issues, you know, that was one of the areas we had tapped out for parking for Station 1 and the Orpheum, four more spots closer to the venues. All right, any other thoughts? All right, we'll table that one too. I think great feedback, I think the consistency with all the other lots is a great idea. I think no overnight, except for snow emergencies, is a good idea, figure out time-wise. Are all of them 12 to 6?
No, I made that up.
Oh, you made it up, oh, so we'll look into that.
I think it just says no overnight parking right now.
So, if you were to drive by, if a car was there at 4 o'clock in the morning, you got to figure that's overnight. Like, they're not getting out at 5:30 to move there. So, you know, not super restrictive, but like, if it's obvious.
Yeah, I thought it needed to be late enough to let, you know, Station 1 empty out or a show empty out.
Right.
But not too late, so that they're all hanging out after the bars, chit-chatting outside the Shay's house. So, it's a balancing act of how to make it so you don't have nuisances, but you do have it serve the business.
Yeah.
And if there's any more feedback to filter that, if there's anyone else watching, or if you all talk to anyone in the neighborhood or other businesses or, you know, tenants that you may have, you know, to pass that feedback along to us too before the next meeting, so we can weigh that as well.
All right, great, we'll put that in a future meeting too.
Thank you for coming and let us know what you think about the policy.
Thank you. All right, so earlier I jumped the gun with the warrant review. Apologize, got a little sidetracked. But now we've, thank you Paige for putting me back on track. So, back on, the annual town meeting warrant for us to sign, should we hold off on that until the next two things we're going to be bringing up?
The, yeah, why don't you do these, 7-1 and 7-2 first?
Correct.
And then finalize the warrant? I mean, then talk about the warrant.
Then talk about, so 7-2 and 7-3. So, the first thing, we've got a couple of citizens petitions that sort of came in late. If they came in on time, citizens petition goes right to the warrant. We could discuss it, but it's automatically right, put on the warrant. So, the first one that came in late, we're going to have.
So, just to clarify, both of these came in late?
No, only one came in.
No, that's what I thought, yeah, so.
I apologize, the other one.
No, 7-2, the feasibility study, that's on the warrant, that's on the warrant already. It's more so you can hear.
Oh, an FYI from him?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do 7-2 first, though. I guess you're up.
That's John.
I'm 7-1.
She's 7-1.
John's 7-2.
John's 7-2.
Oh, I have, must have an old, I've got 7-1 as review the warrant.
Oh, Doc.
This is the one I printed up!
That's the old one.
I just printed it yesterday. Sorry, never mind.
So, wait, which one are you taking?
No, 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 so we're going to do. Nope, I apologize, we're going to do 7-1.
All right, John.
Which I thought was 7-2 and, don't have a good day today.
Heather Harding, 14 North High Street. Very briefly, I'm just here to apologize for dropping the ball and missing the deadline. And I'm hoping you will consider adding this to the warrant. I know you guys have to consider it on a case-by-case basis, which is why I'm here. I am not here asking you to weigh in at all on the merits of the actual petition itself, just to see if you will be willing to add it to the warrant to move it on to the next step to AdCom and Town Meeting. And just so that we're clear, this is not retroactive. So, this would not change any prior board's decisions or anything. This is simply moving forward. And the example that we had been using when talking about it was, you guys will remember recently, we renamed one of our baseball fields, the Bayick Field, and we are building the Debbie Giardino Pavilion. And in the past, the board just would have voted and that would have happened. But you guys changed the policy on the town side so that it then required a town meeting vote to kind of give it its final blessing. And we did that, we've done it twice so far and it worked well. So, say in, you know, 25 or 50 years, the schools wanted to rename the IGO School or name a new school. This change would just make it so that there's consistency across the board and that those votes would also go to town meeting for their final blessing. That's it.
So, I think you need to just back it up.
Yes.
For the current bylaw and what you're looking to change too. So, we may know that.
Okay.
But I think people watching at home may not understand what you're asking for.
Got it.
I mean, we could even read the, so it's really an addition.
Yeah, exactly.
Read that word for word.
It's an addition, right. So, I wasn't sure if you guys wanted to actually get into the petition or just the fact that I was asking you to add it. Because that's really all I'm here asking you to do tonight, is just to add it. I mean, I'm going to go to AdCom and Town Meeting and everything else and talk about the merits of it. This was just to say, I'm sorry, I was busy, I dropped the ball, I missed the deadline. Would you put it on so that I can then go to AdCom and go to Town Meeting? But it's up to you guys.
Do you want to hear about it? So, I read it and I understand, and again, I don't want to talk about the merits of that right now. But in reading it, and let me just preface, I have never studied law. That said, in reading it, this feels very much like something that has always been a policy-based type of. Item? Policy-based item. And so, I would, we may not have any laws on the books that look anything like this. I'd be interested in, so this may be go-to-town meeting, but it may be dead in the water just because this is more like a policy than a law. So, I'd be interested in, say, Pat Costello's, or if we, we don't have any of our legal.
Has he waited on us? Has he waited on us? Like, do we even, is this even a correct citizen petition?
We can't do that.
That's what I'm questioning, so.
We can't edit citizen petitions.
I did ask that. Because what I did was I literally just copied it from the town side, the exact wording. So, and the way it was explained to me was, once we vote on it at town meeting, everything then goes to the Attorney General. And the Attorney General weighs in on the legality of it and wish it, if it can actually be enacted. Like, remember we did the.
State level?
On the state level. Remember we did the one before about the local, something to do with the bars and, remember? And we voted it in and then the Attorney General said, nope, not a, you can't do it, and just crossed it out. So, I guess the Attorney General reviews everything we vote on at town meeting to see if it is actually correct.
Right.
So, that would still have to happen.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, and that makes sense, because, I mean, just, again, not discussing the merits, but the, the structure of this addition. It says, it talks about change, addition or removal to any Foxborough Publica School logo, mascot or, and/or name.
Yep.
So, that would include if the IGO wanted to take their Fox off of, you know, off of their branding and change it to something else.
No, that's a good question, I hadn't anticipated, I hadn't thought of it like that. I thought of it more.
So, it includes all of the schools, including elementary, middle school. There, it's open, you know, as far as interpretation of this, when you create a law, generally, it's for the good of the people. It's to promote, you know, safety, create a structure. And so, I'm questioning, so there's also an element of enforcement with the law, right? So, what happens if there's a violation? And does removal, in terms of removal of logo, mascot or name, what if there's a replacement of something that had feathers and spears on it? And the replacement doesn't have feathers and spears, is that considered a violation of this? And what would the enforcement be? I'm just trying to, things that are policy-based are generally broader and you can interpret. And it would be, so this would be more of a school committee policy type of question. Whereas, as a law on the books, this is, I think this would be the first of its kind, where it's dictating certain rules. Laws are generally very specific. This is much more broad. So, in terms of enforcement, understanding how it's enforced or how it's applied, there just may be a lot of legal questions. And maybe the, maybe the state would take a look at it. But I would think that we would want town council to weigh in first, to make sure that it's, when people are actually looking at this at town meeting, that it makes sense to them and it may actually be effective as opposed to just something that is ineffective and it's on the books and it doesn't make sense. So, I'm just thinking about having some council advise on it.
No, I know from that point of view, if we get to that point, and again, we're, you know, way ahead of ourselves, we can get town council opinion on it, but we can't change a citizen's input.
Right.
A citizen's petition.
We can't, but we do have time to discuss it.
Absolutely, and it's going to be discussed for an advisory and it's certainly going to be discussed if we approve this.
Yeah.
On the top floor.
I'm suggesting we, town council takes a look at it now. And then, if it, if they're comfortable with it and it makes sense to them and it looks like it's legally binding and makes sense as an actual, again, as an actual law in Foxborough code, Foxborough's books of, you know, our code of law, this would be, a policy decision would be codified. And just want to have their, so before I'm comfortable saying, let's put it on the warrant for this fall, or, sorry, for the spring, I'd just like to have, you know, talk about it, understand their, to get their perspective. And if they're kind of fine with it, then.
This is one of those incidents where we have to make that decision tonight.
We do?
Yeah, whether we're going to put it on the warrant or not.
But the warrant's already closed, so.
She's asking us to open it.
When's it being printed?
Excuse me, because the warrant's closed and the procedure, the select board would have to open the warrant to then put the citizen petition on it.
So, that's what we're being asked to do, is to open the warrant to put the citizen's petition on it.
But I have a suggestion that might work. If you're considering it, I would be perfectly fine, even though it's a citizen petition, I know you can't change it. If Pat Costello looked at it and said, I don't think it's legal and it wouldn't fly, I'll withdraw it. I mean, I have no interest in going against town council. I just, as a citizen, also can't ask him to help me write a warrant article.
Right, of course.
Have you talked to the school side about working? I mean, this is, this is asking us to open the warrant to vote on something to change the duties of the school committee. So, have you spoken to them about it? Because I, like I've said, I've talked to you about this.
Yes, yes.
I'm worried that it's putting us in a position, and again, we're not talking about the merits of this, but this is divisive enough, we all know how this meeting started. Is the timing of this appropriate for us to make an exception, to have to take? You know, it puts us in a position, I feel like.
Right, we're pulling a policy decision away from the school board, who are elected, and there is an election coming up and codifying what is traditionally and has always been a policy-type decision. So, I'm also struggling with that aspect of it as well.
So, the options would be obviously, and that's why I was asking, that's why I'm not asking you to weigh in on the merits of that tonight, because I wouldn't ask you to weigh in on that. I was just asking you whether or not you would add it, because if I try to wait till the fall, you need 150 signatures. And although I have like four times what you need for, so we could do it in the fall, but it would, A, we don't know if we're going to have a fall. B, it's not going to be a very big draw. C, the people that, what?
This could be a big draw.
Yeah. And the only part to thinking about this, and I know I've talked to you about this, so I'm not trying to surprise you, is they are coming up with a logo right now. And this is to add a logo. Like, I don't want to throw a wedge in anything that's going on right now. I think it's like throwing a stick of dynamite in it. It's, that's what makes me worried is, had this just happened and this gone in as a citizen's petition? That's one thing. But now, we're being asked to make an exception to get this on there. And is the timing of this right, in my opinion, given what's in play right now, how this meeting started? You know, this could have an impact that if something happens, it could get voted down at town meeting. at Town Meeting. And I don't know that we're the right people to really gatekeep that yes or no, and then...
But it also comes down to a very basic point. And if we're just looking at the fact that it's a citizen's input, do we as a board want to set the precedent that if you're late, we'll allow you to come in front of us and try to change it?
Well, that's what I'm worried about too, like, you know, not to use your, but like John's example, like, there's big ramifications to these citizens' inputs. Like, like a citizen's petition could have us, you know, building $500,000 worth of sidewalks that is not built into the budget, for example. So, you know, ideally, we don't have citizen's petitions, and, you know, we work with boards and talk to the school department and talk to us, and, you know, they're kind of a last choice versus, you know, kind of a way around it a little bit.
Right. And there's, there's no saying that this, you know, a citizen's petition, to your point, Doc, goes to Town Meeting. I'm just also considering the, the risk of this waiting six months, or even if it's a whole year, I don't see a lot of risk in having this, taking some time and reviewing it and having it while the, you know, the warrant is actually open. So I'd be comfortable with seeing this, you know, having this on there six months or a year down the road.
Right.
The minimal risk there.
Dennis?
No, I agree. I, I was thinking of deferring it, you know, and as, doing something like this at the 11th hour after the year we just had, it's just going to invite questions and suspicion. I hate to say it, you know, I'm new to the game here, but I've seen it over the past year. You do something like this at the last minute, and you're trying to do the right thing, it won't, to me, it might not be necessarily interpreted as the, as the right thing.
I think overall, you know, the benefit of waiting six months versus making that decision tonight, but that's my opinion too. What's, uh...
I mean, it, it sounds like what I'm hearing is we're all on the same page, that holding it six months isn't going to kill anything. It's, you know, if there's nothing now pressing, let's wait. There's a lot of talk about transparency, and I know we're always trying to be transparent in these 11-hour ones. I don't want there to be any perception, especially given how, you know, divisive this particular issue is. I think that the safer bet is to let it play out the right way. You never know what the next citizen's petition could be, and to have that in on time, and there's a deadline so that it can go through the right processes, and have all the boards weigh in, and I think is unfortunately just the safer thing to do. And it doesn't discount anything you're trying to do. I love people bringing forward citizen's petitions, but, you know, maybe talk to, it will give us some time to talk to the school side, you know, hash it out a little bit, get some more opinions on it. And I realize, you know, everything that you do, so I don't want you to think that, you know, it's, it's a tough decision, for sure.
Let's go through the motion.
Okay. Um, let me see, do I have a motion? Sorry, I just got to scroll up. Okay, so I don't really... There is no, no motion.
There's really no motion.
It's just we take no action. No, so you were just saying, motion to not, okay. So motion to take no action on the citizen's petition? Or reopening the warrant for the citizen's petition?
There you go. Second, second. Any further discussion? So, all those in favor of not reopening the warrant for the citizen's input, say aye.
Petition.
Petition. All right, sorry, but, all right.
Now setting the stage, this one's in on time.
This is in on time, you're just giving us a...
And he's making us...
Letting us know what it's all about.
And how long do we have a time, like, are we doing, is this a 20-minute presentation, a five-minute presentation, a...
Hopefully a five or 10-minute presentation.
As long as it takes, and we'll go fast as we can, so...
So five, 10 minutes.
As, as long as it takes, we'll do what we can, so...
Depends on the number of questions.
So, so I am going to expedite as fast as I can. I anticipated questions. As you know, I was a former member of the Advisory Committee, and during that time, I investigated quite a number of things.
Introduce yourself, don't forget.
John Mahoney, 41 Putnam.
Jack Martin, 66 Summer Street.
So in case, do you guys have a copy of the petition currently?
We do.
We do, Tim, but, uh...
All right. So, back in 2015, the town of Foxborough did a master plan, and I have, out of the 400 pages, just a quick snippet of seven pages.
Oh, what a familiar old document.
Yep. So, on the second page, I just included the cover sheet. On the second page, the townspeople weighed in on quite a number of things. A better downtown, no casino, if you can remember back then. Expanded recreational opportunities, better walkability, bike paths, more robust downtown, including restaurants. So, we didn't have the casino, we got a nicer downtown, but there's still a lot of room for improvement that people wanted, bike paths, trails, walkability, a better, better ability to get outside and enjoy themselves. So back in 2020, the Economic Development Committee started taking a look at the possibility of a path that was recommended in the master plan. Paige Duncan worked with the Economic Development Committee, and that had members of the Planning Board and the Craft Group, and they put together a proposal to the Massachusetts State Trails Grant Program. The Massachusetts State Trails Grant Program gets funded about $10 million a year, they can give up to $500,000 to a community to do this kind of work. And the Economic Development Committee was taking a look at a path through Foxborough that would have connected the Town Center to the area of Patriot Place. And the state gave feedback, and it said two things. One was, the request was for $40,000 to conduct the study, to see if we could get from the Town Center to Patriot Place. And the state said, this is really a one-shot deal. We want you to kind of only come to us once. So if you get the $40,000 for the study, don't come back for the rest of the $500,000. The other thing the state said was, our priorities are connecting regional networks. And a trail, even though it's, you know, two centers of town, it's only one town. And I'm going to give you this map of the state's priorities, just to let you know what they're working with. So the state's funding $10 million a year towards projects all over the state, there's a lot of projects going on. And Foxborough ranked very low because it was not going to connect to any other trails. So when I, when I took a look at this, I thought, you know, what could help us rank a little bit higher? And there's actually a possibility that we could connect to some other trails, we could expand the study, and put ourselves in a very strong position to get this Mass State Trails Grant for $500,000 in the future. From Foxborough Center, it's about two miles to Mansfield Center. Mansfield Center has an existing trail that's built and has been around for many years, the World War II Veterans Trail. It goes east all the way to the Norton border. Norton has recently completed or is about to complete their trail that goes from Mansfield all the way through Norton to Taunton. Taunton is currently examining a trail that will go through Taunton and then south all the way down the Fall River, connect to the South Coast Railway, that will go all the way to Cape Cod and Providence. The other thing that's going on is the Mediconic Greenway. There's an abandoned railway that goes northward through Walpole, Rentham, Norfolk, Plainville, North Attleboro, into Lincoln, Rhode Island, which would connect to the Blackstone Valley Trail that goes from Providence to Worcester. So what you have between Foxborough to the southeast, we have a, a trail that's existing and expanding. And to the north through Walpole, we have a trail that's being worked on and is moving ahead quite nicely. In fact, both Norfolk and Rentham, in the last two or three years, they have completed their feasibility studies. Norfolk completed their feasibility study for about $50,000. They had about three, I believe, three miles through Norfolk. And Rentham, which had five miles, completed their feasibility study for a sum of $80,000. It was a little bit difficult to find good information online, so I went through Town Meeting minutes, news articles, and other publicly available information to try to get the best information I could present on costs.
And this is the cost of the study?
Correct. So, what I did was, I took a look at the towns working on the South Coast Rail, and I took a look at the towns working on this Mediconic Greenway, which goes from northward to North Attleboro, I thought, both in terms of recency, things within the last three to four years, and I didn't want to compare things, you know, on Cape Cod, North Shore, directly around Boston, because that's not really what Foxborough is. And given that, there were three studies conducted in the last three or four years. There was a South Coast Study, the Rentham Study, and the Norfolk Study. And I thought, what, what would be the appropriate amount be to get us from the border of Mansfield through Town Center, Town Center up to the area of Patriot Place, and Patriot Place onto Walpole? And of course, I'm welcome to feedback if 100,000 is not the right number, but based on, when we applied in 2021 for $40,000 to go from Town Center to Patriot Place, based on Rentham, Norfolk, and the South Coast, I'm thinking 100,000 is the right number. Of course, if Paige has any feedback or, you know, says this is a crazy amount, or that's not the right amount, that's fine. And what I was taking a look at is the reasonableness of this. When you look back at the 2015 Master Plan, you can see this walkability, the ability you have, this is one of the three things that basically didn't happen in the Master Plan. We could, no casino, better downtown, and some type of walkability or shared use path. What we have is a near $95 million budget, and we had around $6.5 million of free cash, and we had around $6.5 million of some local receipts, which make up the pilot program, the meals tax, and the, the, what was the third one?
Meals and the, uh, chapter 90?
Hotels tax, excuse me.
Hotels tax.
So, so together, those three make up about $6.5 million. So my request for 100,000 would be less than 2% of free cash, less than 2% of those three local receipt groups. So in terms of, is it reasonable? Is it, is it fair? With 18,000 people in Foxborough, this would be $5 per resident to conduct the study. And so your question is, what happens next? And what happens next is, if we conduct the study, if it comes back favorable and organized and gives us a path forward, then we can go ahead and apply for the Mass State Trails Grant. I have this to show you kind of the process.
Thanks.
So in, in the other towns that have done this themselves, a lot of them have done funding through the Community Preservation Act, which we don't have. But unlike a lot of towns, we don't have a stadium with hotels, restaurants, and a lot of other things going on. The second step after you get the study done is design and engineering. It looks like, based on all the other towns I've seen around, it's, it's 100,000 to 150,000 per mile to do design and engineering. And I think that could be reasonably obtained through the Mass State Trails Grant if we get the 500,000. And then all the other projects around that I've seen have received federal funding or significant state funding to do the construction. The construction is around 1 to 2 million a mile. If we did five miles through Foxborough, that would be 6 to 12 million. Representative Auchincloss, who represents our district, has recently sponsored a number of funding items for trails in, I believe, Fall River, I, I think, Taunton and Newton and Wellesley. So I would like you guys to support this, because I've laid out the reasons and the history behind it, and if 100,000 is not the right amount, if there's a professional opinion to go a different route. I have reviewed this with a number of people in town, the Chief of Police, the Craft Group, I've met with Seth, I've talked with Chris Gallagher, Paige, and a number of other people. There's nothing really fatal that says this is not a good idea, we shouldn't do it. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to... I don't have all the answers, that's why we need the study, but if you have some questions...
Questions? Thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, so what John has laid out is a comprehensive project, end-to-end, one end to Foxborough to the other, basically, with three components. And so the, you know, each component may have varying levels of interest. I think the component that would drive the most interest, that people would be, a lot of energy behind, is Foxborough uptown area to the stadium, without having to walk through any chain link fences or anything like that. But John's point is that to get the downstream funding, you know, potentially half a million dollars of funding, it would require to look at this as, from the comprehensive view, one end to the other, including that piece that is uptown to the stadium. So that's how, why this is sort of bundled, the three, three pieces are bundled into one package.
To connect a couple of areas.
Yeah, it's...
To connect Mansfield to Walpole.
Mansfield, the ones, you know, you have, you have the existing Mansfield Trail, you have, Walpole isn't as far along as Norfolk and Rentham, but if you get Norfolk and Rentham connected, in addition, Plainville actually has received, I think, $10 million of tip funding, and they're going to completely redo Route 1A from North Attleboro border to Rentham border. So basically, you have three towns out of the six or seven on the trail north of us that are moving along, and Norfolk also voted in Town Meeting to do their design and engineering from CPA funds. So this trail north of us is moving along, and I know Ryan Norton, our GIS person, I believe, lives in Walpole and is working on the Walpole Town Committee to, to get them moving in the direction as well. And with...
Go ahead.
Yeah, with, with the three, basically, if we can go to the state and say, we're going to connect two different existing or coming trails, I think would boost our chances to get the 500,000.
But would it actually connect the trails yet? So like, this part doesn't exist yet? So we're looking to get the study for this piece?
No, the stu, the study would go from the brown line at the bottom.
To the brown line here?
Yeah.
Okay, so it, it would essentially connect the brown lines?
So the $40,000 that the town requested in 2021 was the green line.
Okay.
The $100,000 I'm looking for today would extend the green line to the brown lines.
Thank you.
So I'd be curious, you said you mentioned this and had discussions with the Craft Group, you know?
Yep.
Just spitball under my original thought, when I saw this, was that part of, of the connection. What did the Craft Group tell you when you spoke to them?
So I met with them about two months ago, and we had Ryan Norton, the GIS guy, went through the map, and there were four, there were four somewhat feasible ways to get in and out of the property. I met with them, and they also suggested a fifth. I met with them for about an hour, they went through it, and I said, are there any reasons why any of these routes wouldn't work for you? And one of them would be over Ashcroft Lane and would require a bridge or a tunnel, which would add a lot more construction. So they were looking at, and I was talking with them, about either going up Cross Street connects to Revolution Way and goes behind the Revolution's practice fields, or Putnam Path, which is where the existing kind of VIP game day route is, and would lead into the stadium near the MBTA station and, and kind of the movie theater area.
Two questions. Have you talked, oh, sorry.
Well, just because on this point, so the, the cross approach, to me, I thought of that immediately.
Yep.
And a lot of people are using that now anyway, you know, even though they're not supposed to.
So there is a very high demand, from what I, I walked from the police station to Gillette Stadium using Route 140 and going under by Seasonal, and it's gross. So it's, you know, there is, there's no safe, fast way to get there. You either got to go through some woods or a swamp, or the only way to get there that's safe is to go all the way up North Street by kind of like the McDonald's Country Store, and then go all the way past the truck, and, and that's like a, that adds probably 40 minutes on to the path, because you're going way east. on to the path, because you're going way east and way north.
Two questions, so, have we talked to Public Safety to see if they want to have that type of pedestrian flow? Like, is that, I don't, I have no idea if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
I talked to Chief Grace, and I said, you know, I'm thinking about this, what's your concerns? And he said, one thing is, he's not worried about petty crime, you know? Some people say, oh, teenagers are going to, you know, graffiti or whatever. He said, I'm not worried about that. He shared his concerns, but he did not say, you know, this kills the plan. He said, one, I don't want it to become a drop-off area and mess up my traffic plan. And what he said is, I'm not as worried as that as I would be a few years ago, because North Street is closed to traffic off Route 1, and parking at all official events is now free, so it's not like people need to save 50 bucks, parking is all included in the tickets. So, he did mention that. He also mentioned that he would like to understand what the approach is for larger safety events, and I think that, you know, when the study is done, he has to weigh in on this. He didn't say, don't do it, but he said, these are the things I want to figure out.
When I was on the Economic Development Committee before you took it over, there was a subgroup that was tasked with this exact piece right here. So, it was a trail, not an exact piece, but similar...
Yep.
Uptown to the stadium that had representatives of the EDC, it had representatives, I believe, of planning, and it had representatives of the Craft Group. So, I believe we'd gone there, and kind of in the same spirit of, you know, what have we done to try to work with the departments?
Yep.
And then, my other piece, you can answer it however you want it, you know, so there's no dollar amount in this. As much as you're saying 100,000, the way the citizen's petition is, is there's no even, even ceiling on it? Is there any concern there?
Yeah, so, I'll take the first question. The Economic Development Committee put forward the $40,000 request in 2021. Shortly after that, it went defunct. This, I don't, Paige, there's no, nothing, there hasn't been any economic development in three years, four years?
Right. Oh, so they haven't really met at all since I've...
There's no economic, there's no subcommittee, there's nothing.
Okay.
It's been three years of... Second, so I, so, the rules with citizen petitions are, if you select a dollar amount and you submit it, you are stuck with that dollar amount, you cannot go higher. And, as you know, I, I'm trying to do my best to piece these parts together. I don't know what the cost is, and I needed, you know, I came before you in November, said, can you guys help me? Can, can we look at this? And, you know, I've tried to investigate the towns around and the construction costs, and I've arrived at 100,000 is my best educated guess. My review with Frank Spleen is, is at the town meeting, I must give a move the warrant to include the final dollar amount in source, which would be, as of right now, 100,000 from free cash. And so, on the floor, I would ask 100,000, unless Paige or one of you guys can say, hey, you know, we heard from this consultant or this town, or, you know, 120,000 is the right number, 80,000 is the right number. I don't know, but I don't have a reason to think 100,000 is a wrong number to get it done.
So, the answer to your question, this can be moved up on the floor and not, it doesn't have to be earlier.
Okay, great. And I remember that ceiling being an issue, that's kind of what I couldn't remember the details, though, okay, sorry.
I did speak to the Craft Group a couple, well, last week, I think, and they did say what John said, like, they're interested in talking about it, but they're not prepared to commit to anything. They expressed concerns about the Cross Street location, just because they kind of consider the Putnam Parkway and the Cross Street access through the Revs area as kind of back of house, and it's not set up necessarily for pedestrian movements. So, they weren't saying no, they were just saying they haven't moved it up the chain, they haven't done any diligence on their end to yet give us an area where they'd want folks to be. So, that's kind of fundamental, is to get what, where the Craft Group's going to connect. Because I feel like we can actually, you know, and I also should back up, being the one who did the grant application for the trails one, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with it, that was all proposed as along the rail line, so that was where the access was. It was along the train tracks, and so then the access would have entered into Patriot Place, you know, along the railroad tracks at the train station. So, we don't have that now. Right now, we're looking in town, it would be more on the roads or town-owned land type thing, not along the railroad tracks. So, it is a little different, and I feel like, from the town side, we've already kind of done our due diligence on, like, what we could do on the town part. Really, the big question is what the stadium's going to be bringing to the table, and we're not going to have that, per se, so...
And even from Cross Street, that would have to go over private land, right? Like, that...
No, no, because Cross Street goes there, Cross Street goes from North Street, and then there's Patriot Path or Patriot Way or Patriot...
Revolution Way.
Sorry, Revolution Way.
Revolution Way.
Revolution Way.
That's all built out, like I said, there's a lot of people using that already.
So, so, this is, this is not, you know, the chicken and the egg, this is, this has been an idea for almost 10 years, and if we don't take some sort of step forward, then it will stay an idea, and the step forward is fund a study. And the consultants in the town would have to ask the Craft Group, do you want to do this for real? If so, where do you want to do it? And Dan Krantz, who is part of their group, was on the Economic Development Committee, worked with Paige to submit the grant, so, he's still there, they say they're interested, they say they want to do something, there's nothing concrete, but this is kind of the, this is the push to, let's make something concrete, will this work or not? If it doesn't work, then it's, then it's done. If not, then, you know, don't put it in the next master plan, because it's not going to happen.
Yeah, and the master plan is a decade old at this point, too, so, you know?
Yeah.
Definitely time.
We have a new master plan starting.
Yep, we're going to be starting that. So, I don't think we need to take a position on this, or no vote or anything.
Right.
Either way, this was my question for you.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm going to ask you to please support it. I think it's reasonable, Mark, that when I came back in November, you said, I want to worry about the taxpayers, and I think if we take the first step, dip our toes in the water for 100 grand, and then, you know, move along and get the rest from the state and federal sources, getting to many that, you know, you can see from the priority map, this is going on all over the state, Cape Cod, South Coast, North Shore, all around Boston, Worcester to Providence, you know, I don't think Foxborough should miss out on having something that all these other towns are going to have within 10, 15 years.
Do you think, one, sorry, I thought of one more question. Do you think if we didn't do this, Paige, through this, there'd be any grant, another grant opportunity to do the feasibility study? Or because we've kind of already done it, not, probably unlikely?
Well, no, like John said, you don't want to do a feasibility study for, like, 100 grand, and then leave on the table the possible funding for design or construction, because those are the big-ticket items.
Okay.
So, you could spend 100 on a feasibility study, but then learn that construction is, you know, 3 million, and then you've missed out, you can't go for that 3 million.
Can't go for the 3 million.
If you've already used it.
As you mentioned earlier, they want you to just come in front of them once.
And, this can be phased, you know, if we, there's things going on in Mansfield, there's things going on around Patriot Place, we could say, you know, if it's 3 million proportion, and we can get some type of federal thing from Auchincloss for 3 million, we do phase one, then we think about the rest later.
No, I think it's a good idea to bring in front of the town.
Yeah, thanks for the explanation of it, because obviously, we read it and look at it, but it's good to hear.
Yeah.
And it's a good practice for you for town meeting.
I know, I know the budget is tight, and I don't know how much, you know, how much of a smaller thing I could ask for.
Well, it's obvious you put a lot of work into it, you know, so that gets our attention.
And I'm going back in front of the AdCom, I think, in a month, to finalize with them, so...
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
All right, so now we're on to the warrant.
Now, on to the warrant, now that I have the new agenda.
New agenda. Yes, so, you have a draft of the warrant, it is not finalized, it's, but it's getting close, and real close. Obviously, we're not adding anything new to it, but we are refining the language, and, you know, all the, Katie's been keeping us all on task, getting everything done. So, we're in good shape, it's still, how many articles? 30 articles, still looking at possibly two nights. Yeah, and so, Doc and I worked with the group to come up with an order, and I think I'll just summarize that here. So, the first night would be budget, and then, the DPW lock, DPW facility expansion would go first, because they're kind of first in line, we want to make sure they don't get overshadowed by the community center. So, DPW expansion first, then go straight into Women's Locker Room, and then into the Main Street, the community center acquisition. So, that was the sort of, and then, we keep going that first night to see, you know, depending how late it gets, we'll see. And then, we're assuming we'd have to come for night two, and we purposefully put the MBTA and that type of zoning at the end of that night, in hopes that it draws people back for night number two and keeps them in their seats. So, that's kind of the strategy that I think, Doc, you were thinking of.
My thought was, if we do have to come back, depending on how long that first night goes, it gives Frank a nice, our town moderator, Mrs. Spleen, a nice cutoff point at a certain time in the night, knowing that, all right, now we've got the MBTA communities, that's going to be a big topic of discussion, let's wait till Tuesday night, which we already have set aside if we need it. If for any reason, things go a little bit quicker, you know, then it's up to, you know, Mrs. Spleen, Frank, our moderator, you know, his decision at that point. And then, we'll have MBTA communities and a few other zoning things after that.
Any discussions with Frank about reading the budget? And I guess, it's important line by line, but like, maybe the sources as presented, or any...
We did have a discussion, I brought it up to him, reminded him that, you know, it was a discussion from last year that he's going to think about this year, just out of curiosity, only because it's semi-era. How long do you think it takes to read the budget?
32 minutes.
And we have an answer? Yeah, my guess was 32 minutes, but we went...
Feels longer.
Exactly?
No, 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 my guess was, guess.
I was like, no way!
But we were able to go back to three, and it was, one was 17, one was 24, and one was 30.
I thought I timed it last year at 39, but I could be wrong, but...
I think that was the 30.
Okay.
So, I think it depends on how quickly some people read it.
It feels like 100 hours, but apparently, it's only a half hour. It's the repetitiveness of reading the same things over and over again that are right in front of us.
Frank is taking it under advisement, and he, we did bring it up. Did he mention anything since?
It was 17 minutes, nine minutes, and 26 minutes, the last three years.
So, it probably also depends who reads it, I mean, that's a big, it's a big variance, but, and I think that there's hopefully a happy medium, like, I think there is value in going line by line, and that allows people to call holds and everything, you know, it's just maybe, again, maybe it's the funding source as presented, because when you're reading the same things over and over again, you know, that's when it...
Yep, we brought it to his attention, he's taking it under advisement, we're going
I don't get the sense it's going to change.
You don't?
Well, no, because it seemed like, like, our argument was that it wasted a lot of time, and then, when you look at the time, it actually felt like it, but it, you know, I don't think we probably convinced him that it was a time waste.
That all three of them were 30, 40, and 60 minutes.
Or 100.
And even if, even if it is nine minutes, if it's nine minutes and half of that is hearing the same thing right over and over again, I know we have trouble getting people to town meeting, we have two town meetings, I know, like, some of the younger people like us have said, like, some of my friends have come, and like, you go and they read the same thing over and over again. So, I understand and I respect that, but I also think, you know, sometimes there's maybe a happy medium, looking at how we do it in other communities. I know other people have come in, I know John Kudair, you know, was very surprised at the way it was done, and it was actually pushed pretty hard last year, and because it wasn't rolled out ahead of time, and people didn't have enough notice, we weren't, there was a decision not to do it, but, you know, the reaction I get, and I'm curious, I don't know how they do it in Falmouth, and how they do it in Franklin and other towns, but a lot of, I hear people are surprised sometimes with some of the repetition in ours, and let's get people there and engaged, and out as promptly and efficiently as possible.
Yeah, we're going to meet back with Frank in the next week or two, but, good, good point. Any other thoughts?
Nope. Caught me in the eye on Doc.
I did catch it, sorry. Okay, so...
So, that's the warrant, basically, you will be voting on it next meeting, right, Katie? So, you'll have to vote it?
Yeah, no vote today, but I don't think, other than some minor language changes, it's pretty much all set.
Getting there.
Yeah. All righty, good. Town manager's update.
Yes. So, the big news that everybody's interested in is, obviously, our potential community center, 76 Main Street. We did put out a press release last week to let everyone know that the town of Foxborough was, did have their offer accepted. You know, there is a lot more legwork to be done before it's finalized, but we are in a great position, where we are the accepted offer, $2.5 million. People have asked, we don't have all the details on the negotiations, that said, we know there were at least five or six other bidders, so it was a competitive process. The 2.5 is below the assessed value by the town of, I think it was like 3.12 or 3.2. So, it is below that value, so that's good. So, anyway, we began, just to give you all a little history, because people seem, there are also, Maura Buckley has done a website on the, on the town's website, there is now a page devoted to the community center, so if folks want to go peruse it. We did start back on January 19th, when the property was listed on the open market, we heard about it, and then, you all know, we quickly mobilized and started looking at it. Years ago, in 2019, there was a study done to look at a possible community center, and three sites were evaluated, and the cost estimates came in extremely high, and knowing we had the DPW building, which is a top priority, and the Taylor School, unfortunately, the community center kind of slipped, and you all heard that, you know, and we know the seniors were very concerned about that, but we're trying to balance the financials. Once we heard about this property being on the open market, we managed to get several tours, Building Department, Facilities, Human Services, DPW, Fire, Recreation, we had our Facilities team out there, Council on Aging, HVAC, Plumbing and Electrical. We also consulted with Bay Colony Group, and the Conservation Commission, and Town Attorney throughout the process to check on certain things, or if we saw something on Facebook, or a rumor about, you know, a stream running through the building, you know, who do you call but Bill Buckley? Because that man knows kind of where things go, so we wanted to hear the skinny on that. We also heard about rumors about mold, and that was in the, in the Foxborough Reporter. We believe that stemmed from a Facebook post, and we did immediately go back to the church and ask for some documentation on that, and they provided us two studies that showed that mold was not present in the, there was an overflowing baptismal font and some concern around that, but there was two studies that showed there was no mold issues. We're now working diligently on the next steps. We have to do a Title V inspection, the building's in great shape, it'll be minor aesthetic improvements. We are looking, if the septic system fails, which we believe it has, we are looking at whether we can tie into sewer, and the warrant will contain an extension of the sewer maps to allow that, because that would be better than building another septic system. That would have a spinoff benefit to any resident that lives between the end of the sewer line near Granite Street up to that way, because then they would now have sewer running by their property, and they could tie in if they needed to in the future. Basically, I know Mark is really excited, and Heather, and the whole team, everybody's excited at the idea of the programming that can be offered to the community, you know, they do such a great job with their limited space, but when you more than double that, almost triple it, then you can, you get that much, even more programs. So, we're going to see Recreation, Human Services, Council on Aging, and Veterans all sharing that space and with room to grow. The key thing is, is as we mentioned earlier in the meeting, it is a two-step process. So, the first step for all, we have three debt exclusion projects. One is this community center, two is the DPW building, and three is the public safety locker room for the police side. All three each require affirmative ballot vote on May 6th, and then also require an affirmative town meeting vote on either May 13th or 14th, starting May 13th. Without both of those approvals for each project, that project would not move forward. So, anyway, we presented all this information to Capitol Planning, we presented it to the Advisory Committee, we've, we are continuing to do our due diligence, but I just wanted to speak publicly about it, I know there's a lot of questions out there, and just be assured, we are researching everything we find, we think it's a fabulous building, and programming-wise, it's going to be great if it works out.
Yeah, and a couple of patients questioned me on a few things, and, you know, when you sell a house and, or you buy a house, and you have a home inspector come in, you got one home inspector, you know, we had 30 home inspectors from every part of the town going up one side and down the other side of that building, and that building's pretty solid.
One of the things that's out there, you know, beyond the mold, is the flooding from the adjacent property. So, did we see any flooding? I mean, this is a huge storm we just had, three inches of rain. Was there any flooding from that adjacent property?
Well, we haven't been in the building, Mark, right this week, you know, and we are seeing a tremendous amount of flooding. We can say that when we entered the building several times, because we heard about the mold after the first visit... the mold after the first visit, and we went back the second time, and we all kind of exclaimed that, like, first of all, there was no new carpet on the floor, so, I mean, things that you might walk in and go, oh, it's all new carpeting, it's all new walls, we didn't see that, it's, it's concrete, we didn't see any evidence that carpets had been ripped up and hastily replaced, we didn't smell mold. Now, again, that's, that's not the scientific method, but we were, we will do our due diligence, you know, there may be some pumps there, most community, most structures in New England nowadays need some pumps, there are certainly wetlands around there, but we have not yet seen anything, and that indicates, you know, and then the whole premise that a stream runs through it, that was debunked, and, you know, certainly, all of us, I think, are experiencing some different water patterns, we might see that down there, but we haven't yet come across anything to indicate that it floods.
And, and I would just add, we appreciate everyone's patience, I know even people in this room, you know, kind of wanted to know what was going on, but it was, it was a long process, so, you know, as you can imagine, you're bidding, just like you're bidding on a house, you're going against other bidders, there's back and forth, there's a seller in Utah, municipality, so, you know, a lot of this-
We did not know, for a long time.
Yeah, literally, I think the press release was out almost as soon as it was inked, so, you know, it, it was quite a lengthy process, and an involved process, and lots of attorneys, and, and checking on things, and as soon as we had that information, that was really the instant that it was released, but I'm sure you can imagine, and until there's ink on that paper, you don't want to start, you know, communicating anything prematurely that's not executed.
And we are committed to, you know, being fully transparent, and we do have the website as, you know, we put the mold reports up there, you know, we have what we have, we've put up there, we will continue to do that, this is a community project for a community center, so it's in our interest to share what we have, again, we're going to do videos, we're going to try to get the word out, but yeah, so, stay tuned.
Just from my understanding, for the debt exclusion, do all three of them have to go, or could they go individually?
Individually.
They're all individual.
There's not, then it's tied together.
They're standalone, each of them, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it may be, you know, I mean, I mean, I'm not sure all three will be approved in one town meeting, it could be that they, you know, two were chosen, and, and one goes by the wayside this year, one, you know, and so, we don't know yet what the appetite, and I will have, Marie's working on right now the estimates, so like, if you have a single-family home valued X, you know, and you approve, we're going to try to have it so you can plug and play and figure out what, you know, the impact on these debt exclusions would be to your home budget, based on, you know, which project goes through, if all three went through, if just one, so that folks with homes can kind of extrapolate what the, the impact to them would be.
One thing that we just haven't mentioned that I just want to talk out loud, too, about is, you know, while we are potentially purchasing the property at Seventy-Six Main Street, there is also on the warrant to dispose of the old-
Yes.
-community center, so you can think, you know, the money from the sale from, from those proceeds would go towards this project, so just want everyone to evaluate that, and know that that's a possibility out there, you know, to kind of help-
Some funding coming in.
Fund, yeah, and move money from one, from one building to the next.
Awesome, thank you, Paige.
And then, one other comment from a concerned citizen was, he would like an open house at the new community center, and I would just say that we don't own it yet, so, we can't yet host open houses there, but obviously, once we can open it to the public, we will, but for right now, I mean, we don't even have access to the building, it's limited, you know, for inspections and whatnot, so we can't be bringing in, you know, throngs of community members yet, but-
Well, we'd love to.
We would love to, yes.
What about the locked, I got to ask, what about the locked door? There was one door, one room we couldn't get into, what was in there?
Still locked, we haven't seen it.
Oh, boy.
It's the facility manager's current personal item, so we're trying to get in there with the Realtor this weekend.
We're working on it. Maybe that's where all the mold and flooding lives, I don't know.
Tony's vault, so exciting.
Well, if we find-
It does appear to be a very small room.
It does.
Yeah, break into it.
Yeah, we'll get in there and, and we, yeah, we're going to make sure we check out everything.
The elevator, we haven't mentioned that, too, it will-
Yep, it needs an elevator.
We'll need an elevator.
And a generator.
Yeah, we've looked at the cost of that, so, you know, I think we've, we've thought all that through, but just want the community to understand how complicated and all the different pieces of this that go into it, and the steps to follow.
Yes, it's been a lot, but it's exciting.
All right.
And I got to go to the senior center yesterday, and boy, that's fun to go to the senior center when, you know, they're pretty excited about a community center, kind of a hero. If you ever want to feel good, just go on over to the senior center. Right, Paul? Am I?
Minus one.
Minus one.
I will quit you.
Yeah, one, yeah, one heckler.
Okay, this is always, this has got to be one.
I know. So that's, that's a community center update. I have more on my town manager, I almost have planner's report, but-
Keep going.
Okay, let us see what I have here, not much else. So, MBTA communities, everybody's favorite subject. The planning board, after discussing with the moderator Frank Spleen, is going to reopen the public hearing on the MBTA communities, just because I believe, and this is through secondhand, but I believe Frank wants the planning board to make a report. The report, they, the way they voted was to neither support nor oppose, and Frank wasn't necessarily comfortable with that, so I think they're going to reopen and discuss it. I don't know what it will change, if anything, but just so folks know, April eleventh, there's a plan to reopen that, so that, try to get a better position from the planning board for town meeting. We got an, I think I might have mentioned this, we got an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan grant for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which is great, but it has to be done by June thirtieth, we got it like ten minutes ago, so that's awesome. Fortunately, Mark has taken that on, we got to love Mark, because I, I applied for this grant as town manager, I kind of just threw it in at all, two-fifty, and honestly, it's too much, the quotes came back a lot less, and it's a great project, it's just rather a lot to be getting done by June thirtieth, but we're not going to let that money go, so we're going to take care of that, right, Mark? The collective we, we are on it, says Mark. Town council, thank you to Leah for working with me on the RFQ, as you know, Pat Costello's retiring, so we have an RFQ, it went out today, it's now public today, so, we did get names from Pat Costello, I also asked Jamie, I haven't gotten hers back, but, send it out to all the normal places, but we did send it to the people that Pat had recommended, and stay tuned, the plan is to try to get that reviewed, hopefully, before the, well, before June thirtieth, obviously, so before, but hopefully even, I'd love to give Leah a chance to sit on and son of it, but we'll see how, it probably won't move quickly enough for Leah to vote on it, but at least maybe have some input. The benches, the, we've been getting applications, I was thinking it was a big bust, but it turns out, we have like, I think a bunch, I heard like maybe up to ten, so they're going to DPW, so they're not coming to us, so, just a reminder, try to get those bench applications in for the end of March, we might also have trees, you might have noticed that Park and Rec, Park and Rec, I've been watching Park and Rec. Tree and Parks have been out removing trees this week, so they, Chris did mention there might be a couple trees that need to be replaced, so that's another opportunity.
That doesn't hit too close to homepage, wa, watching that TV show.
Well, I'm only on season one, but everybody's told me that I need to watch it, so I was like, I just need to, and I want to note that the planner in the season one is kind of like, the guy. So, like, who knew the planners were so the guy? Anyway, yeah, no, it's been funny and very silly, so. For our human resources, let's see, we made an offer to a veteran service officer today, so we'll find out if she accepts soon, hopefully, seems like she might. The Paige is getting a, not me, Paige, the other Paige is getting a human, I don't talk about myself in the third person, not in front of people, anyway. Human resources specialist is starting on April first, that's a part-time, nineteen-hour position, no benefits, so that'll be good to give Paige some help over there. We're still, we did do an interview for the Director of Land Use and Economic Development today, and we're always looking for water techs, and then in communications, I mentioned that Maura's on board, poor thing is like drinking from a fire hose, it's just like, oh, do this, oh, no, and now do this, and you got to do this, too, and, so, but I think she's okay.
She's banged a couple things out that we talked about already, so.
Yeah, she's like, and then Mark noticed that, like, she's like, we'll talk, and then she goes and gets it done, so, I think she's okay, I don't think we've killed her yet, and, you know, and when I came back day two, I was like, oh, God, you came back, thank you. I think she likes it, she's like moving in and making herself comfortable, and I, I think it's good, but she's working on the website, she noted that it needs a lot of work, it's going to take some time, but she's digging right in. The new feature we've added, because now that I'm town manager, I get all these annoying emails from the utility companies that I do not know what to do with, it's like a notification about this, and a noti, seems to mean nothing to me, you know, it's all mumbo jumbo about rate setting and whatnot, but I, I feel like they send it to me for a reason, so, I don't know, I don't want it to die with me. So, Maura, like, I forwarded it to her, and I was like, hey, what do we do? And so we came up with the idea of having like a uni, a utility news spot on the website. Now, again, I don't know if anybody's going to care about any of that, but at least, if you find it and you do care, you can read up to what I get, because there's a lot of nothing, but it might mean something to someone. So that's like Comcast, Verizon, National Grid, Eversource, if they send me stuff, we're just throwing it on there, and then letting the people decide whether it's relevant.
Maybe.
No.
No?
No, infrastructure utility, not services.
Speaking of, do we have a time for them to come back to our meeting, remember how we had to cancel that?
We don't, I'll have to follow up on that.
Sorry to interrupt, it just came to my brain as you were talking.
Smart, I forgot about it.
June fourth.
Oh, we're on it? Look at us, yeah, we're on it.
Yeah, already scheduled, okay.
We're good, we got that. Emerging notifications, that program, again, Maura's trying to get trained, she's working with Aaron and trying to do, what are those things, tutorials on, I'm trying to get ready, because again, we're trying to find a way to be able to reach out to residents as needed, if they need emergency or other notification. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we are scheduling the cable shows, so stay tuned for those, we have one next week, I think, and then two the following week, or two next week and one the following, so. And then we have some, did I already do these, Katie, is this from last meeting? Teddy Bear Picnic and all that, is that the last one I did? Town properties, I might have already done these.
Yeah, that's awesome.
The horseshoe league, that's old, never mind.
Number two is American Legion. Let me know that.
This is one. Oh, Memorial Day on the Common, Rabies Clinic, oh, with Board of Health on April sixth, and Hazardous Waste Day on March thirtieth, so those are important dates coming up, good. We didn't miss that, but, no, Hazardous Waste and Rabies Day, that was your call.
That was, yep.